I call to order this meeting of the Town of Buena Vista Board Trustees. It's Tuesday, September 28th, 2021, and the time is approximately 7:08. Paula, would you please give us a roll call?
That's Mayor Lacy. Trustee Payne.
Here.
Trustee Lucrezi.
Here.
Trustee Nyberg.
Here.
Trustee Rowe.
Here.
Trustee Swisher.
She is, he is here somewhere.
And trustee Floppy.
Here.
Mr. Floppy is participating on Zoom. The rest of us are in person. Okay, would you join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please? Nice to see a good, healthy crowd out there. Thank you for coming. I know you have lots of other things to do on a Tuesday night, but we really do appreciate your input. And if you would like to speak during public comment or during the public hearing, need for you to have signed in. So make sure that you did sign in if you intend to speak. If you speak during the public comment period, it will not become a part of the official record of the hearing. So if your comments have to do with short-term rentals, you may want to wait and speak during the public hearing versus speaking during public comment. Okay. We would like to consider the agenda. Comments or changes from the trustees on the agenda. Hearing none, is there a motion to approve the agenda?
No move.
Rowe and.
I'll second.
Okay. Lucrezi. Second. Okay, and the consent agenda. On the consent agenda, I'd like to point out that it includes the Board of Trustees approving a handbook for the Board of Trustees. We've gone through that at previous meetings, and so this is approval of that. Are there any comments on the consent agenda?
We have to vote on the agenda adoption.
Oh, yeah, we could do a roll call.
A call vote, okay. Mayor Protim Baye. Yes. Trustee Lucrezi.
Yes.
Nyberg.
Yes.
Rowe.
Yes.
Swisher.
Yes.
And Floppy.
Yes. Okay. Thank you. Is there a motion on the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Lucrezi and Swisher, second. And any further discussion of that? So we would like a roll call vote on that as well.
Mayor Protim Baye. Yes. Trustee Lucrezi.
Yes.
Rowe.
Yes.
Nyberg.
Yes.
Swisher.
Yes.
Floppy.
Yes.
Oh, it's going to give me a list of people who have signed up to speak during public comment. When you do speak, I'd like for you to limit your comments to three minutes and start out by giving your name and address. So I'll go down the list, and you can tell me if you'd like to speak now or during the public hearing. Catherine. Is it? Churchill?
It's Eiko.
Eiko.
Later.
Or now?
Later.
Okay. And Linda Barrow. And David. Later. Nancy Locke.
Now.
Now, okay. And Don Nelson. Corey Flickenter. Okay. You don't want to speak at either time, or maybe later?
Maybe later.
Okay. And Jessica Edie.
Later.
Okay, so we'll hear from Nancy Locke at this point. So please give your, your name and your address to begin with.
My name's Nancy Locke. I live at 314 Cedar Street, and I have a short-term rental at 320 Cedar Street. I have two, two concerns. That's why I'm not wanting to talk later because they're not on the proposal. But the first one is that at the IRS reading where you might want to increase tax, tax on the short-term rentals. And I think that would be very prohibitive to our guests that stay in our short-term rentals. They already are paying, you know, town, state, and local sales tax. And then the other thing is in the proposal that I had received, that I had to state that our, that they had to have a quiet hour. It started at seven o'clock at night, and then it went from seven o'clock at night to seven o'clock in the morning. And I felt like that, that's not fair because we have music uptown on Main Street till 10 o'clock at night even. And those are my two concerns. Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy. No other public comment. So we will move on to staff reports.
Just one second. Let's check if anything came in through Zoom.
Yeah, thank you, Phil.
Oh, Michael, have you seen anything?
I have not seen anything on Zoom. But also, there was not a call for anyone to comment by raising their hand.
So if anyone would like to speak on Zoom, they could raise their hand. And if anyone is calling in by telephone, there's a way for them to speak as well.
All right, I see nothing.
Thank you.
So Philip has decided to give us his time tonight. No, no report. So we'll move on to Michelle, the treasurer's report.
Thank you, Mayor Protim Baye. Baye, I appreciate that you were able to step in for the mayor. My memo appears on page 45 of the packet. We have a URL for the transparency website, which will be updated for, for, up-to-the-date information on the activity of town. As of September 30th, that will happen in a couple of days, and that way you'll have up-to-date information when you go to look at the transparency website. Twenty-one budget book has been published and is located at this URL on my report. It is also available, the URL is also available on the town website. Town sales tax for July came in, and it is keeping with the trend of the rest of the year so far. The 2020 actual as compared to the 2021 budget and the 2021 actual growth from 2020 is still pushing 33%, and the excess over budget is 28%. The surplus over budget that we have has been falling through two fund balances now at 608,000. I also keep statistics on the difference between local sales and remote sales just to try and keep track of where these sales are coming from and how much impact the new Wayfair versus North Dakota decision had on our sales tax. And you can see the remote is in, the remote is in the, in the bottom graph and the locals in the top graph. And it's steadily growing month by month, but also year over year. The town expenditures and expenditures over 2,000 are listed. And I have attached the sales tax chart, which everybody is very anxious to see every month. That shows that the July is in that bar room. Bar on the bar chart, and that concludes my report at this time, and I'd be happy to take questions.
Are there any questions for treasurer Stok? Thank you.
Thank you.
Al, for our first time ever, we'll have our new planning director, Joseph Typle.
You, Mayor Protim. Trustees, good evening. You all have in your, your packet the, the two-page planning department report. I won't run through it line by line, and depending on the nature of your question, I'm happy to take it. May not be able to answer it in depth yet. Two things I wanted to call out. One, as I mentioned before in our work session, the Planning and Zoning Commission has been very actively thinking about how housing affordability is represented in our planning code, municipal code. And there are four specific topics that they directed staff to either develop and/or work on to bring back for discussion. These are all going to be on the agenda for our October 6th Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. So I'm happy to answer in general any questions you have about these four, but I wanted to make sure to call those out. So I do believe this represents a really important direction from P&amp;Z on how are we constantly thinking about housing affordability? We have a variety of tools as town, but one of them is our municipal code, and how are we thinking about changes to that code to increase the affordability of housing and the availability of housing? Second thing I wanted to call out, as you all know, you, as a board of trustees, have the ability to call up hearings or topics or applications that might normally just stay at planning and zoning. And one that I, I wanted to make sure to call up was a special use permit by ACA to expand their pit mining operations around Gray Drive. So again, it's in your packet. Happy to answer general questions. I wanted to make sure to raise that to your attention. If there's any other questions, I'm happy to.
So could we address the ACA question in trustee-staff interaction? Okay.
I have a question.
Yes.
Under number four, site plans pending, 326 East Arkansas Street, proposed shipping container hotel made out of multiple shipping containers?
Yeah, the applicant has submitted preliminary subdivision and site plan applications for building a multi-unit hotel and with a, with the long-term workforce housing component at 326 East Arkansas. There are a variety of different shipping containers in their concept that would be placed on that property that would comprise the actual hotel and living quarter units. The existing house on that property would remain in their concept. As you can imagine, on that particular block, there's a lot of public infrastructure and public improvements that need to be thought about, including the alley behind that parcel. So we're currently under review on that. We're working with our referral agencies, especially Senator Cristo, to think about the potential electrical easement that might be needed as well as the other various implications of their proposal.
So like each shipping container would be a room?
Um, essentially, yes. Their, their concept would contain a variety of different shipping containers, some at 40-foot lengths and the 20-foot lengths that would comprise and be stacked in various ways. Right now, their concept shows only two stories to ship on top of each other.
My next question would be like, what would, I would be interested in knowing what the siding on it was going to be like, so it isn't the graffiti railroad yard that they didn't have the money to finish. So if they started this, I would be interested in the finished part. Yeah.
Absolutely. So we actually just had a discussion about this today as it relates not necessarily to this project, but to shipping containers in general, given that we have an increasing query in their use. For this particular project, they would fall under the design standards for non-residential things, proposals. And so they would be required to meet those non, those design standards, which speak to the way in which windows are treated, the level of trim, the way they're called out from the building, various other standards that pertain to the aesthetics. So for that particular project, there are mechanisms in place to ensure that we don't end up with something like the graffiti rail yard situation.
Finished, yeah.
Yeah. Staff is also aware of the other inquiries on storage containers and is looking at various ways to address that.
Thank you.
Any other questions for our planning director? Okay. Sean Williams, Public Works Director of our report.
Yes, thank you, trustees. As, as usual, start off with water, so have some comparisons for the water, water usage for August from 2019 to 2020, 2021. So on those columns, I think you're all familiar, we have bill and master meter water, so the, the accounted water is typically here about 16% on average. So that's kind of what we're seeing now. Kind of interesting to see 2021 dip in August compared to 2020 and 2019, likely due to weather pattern trends, but I'm optimistic. So I think maybe conservation practices are being applied as well coming into this year. So very, very good numbers there. So considerably less usage from 2020, 2019. I left, in, in the water section there, I just wanted to give an update. I'll probably bring a table in more detail as to what the developments are happening with water service lines. 2021, up to this point, we have 50 total new water meters installed for the Town of Buena Vista, the town's water supply. And we also have 39 service line installations. So just for clarity, we don't always see a meter install at the same time a service line does. Usually, a service line is installed early in construction, so sometimes those meters don't get installed, you know, until months later, sometimes years later. So 52 so far this year seems to be kind of alignment with what the trend that we've seen for the last few years. Engineering projects, we're still clogging away on the standards and specs manual, technical manual there, water resource master plan. You all got an early look at it. Last, last meeting, we should have the final report for consumption for the next meeting in October, first meeting in October. We're working on stormwater, and we're wrapping up the water plant expansion project. Preliminary design report should be provided to staff at the end of the week. Normal operations for streets, clogging away. One of the big things that we're working on right now is the C dot sidewalk project. So we broke ground, Bill Street along the highway there, and we're excavating for that sidewalk installation location. As soon as we wrap that setup, we'll be coming in from Old Street in the bank parking lot that is dirt, dirt sidewalk area walking path right along the highway. So we should be able to get that wrapped up in the next few weeks. Just some of the developments that we're working on public works wise. So these are more developments associated to public improvements. We have quite a few more infill developments that are planning departments looking at as well. But, you know, the phase two review for Persopman, trying to get that out the door. And the Court Street social, we don't really have a lot of activity there, but we're looking to work on getting those water lines and services installed. So it's going to be a pretty big impact on Court Street, so pretty much water main extension. So we're going to have some big street cuts happening at that location. Sunset Vista, water's installed. Right now, the contractors are installing gutter, gutter. So out there, so hopefully we can get some asphalt down before the snow flies. And if I skimmed over anything, please feel free to ask me. Thanks.
Any questions for Mr. Williams? Okay. Jack Wiles, Airport Manager.
Thank you, Mayor Protim. Trustees, my report's on page 52. So we got, just to let you know, the, we've rolled over to our winter hours. We're in the staff, a lot of people staffed at the airport, seven days a week, but from eight to four. The summer is where we run a 10-hour day, seven to five. Events we've had just lately, we've had the Hatz BBQ, which we had a pretty good turnout, over 120 folks, they eat all our food, so we had a lot of fun. And then we had the fly-in, which we were a great opportunity to see a number of different aircraft. We've got so a lot of fuel. And we figured we had probably over 300-plus people there, and that's included. A lot of old cars there. It was a lot of fun, great day. I mentioned earlier, we'll probably continue that trend. October, we normally host the business after hours. We were anticipating the goose to be here, so I had to cancel it. Just didn't want to get caught running around, but, and we still don't know if the goose will show up, but I did cancel our business after hours for our October. We're sure we'll reconvene that in the following years. So as mentioned, the Goose's team was here in the first couple of weeks of September. They were going to bring back a second team on the 23rd. They did not. However, we do have the parachute company in there doing their high-altitude training over the, what they do, they try to, they test a lot of the equipment for very high altitude. Alps, they're going to go back over Europe again and try and set some world records for high altitude. They started their training here. So they've, they've been here since the beginning of the week. Should be leaving about Friday. Proofing wise, we seem to be doing well. I mean, we're in the budget process. I just had a meeting with C dot and FA, looking at our, our grants that are coming up for 2022. We do have back-to-back grant funding for '22 and '23, $600,000 each, which now matches $33,000 each year, and that is in the budget. And we're planning those projects in the long term. So you could see our operations pretty much in the positive. Well, we have sort of expanded our normal table here to show percentage changes. The only thing we are, we're still down on military operations as far as the helicopters coming in, but pretty much everything else, we're positive. Jet A way up on the positive side, a little bit low on the, on the 100 low ledge, which is their smaller. Any questions? And that's all I have.
Any questions for the airport? Thank you, Mr. Wiles. Okay, our first item of business is to nominate somebody to the JFE Housing Authority Board of Directors. And the JFE Housing Authority has just been formed this last year, and Becky Gray is employed by it, right? Or you're sort of the head of it. And she and the board have gone through the applications that were submitted for a Buena Vista representative. And she would like to introduce Mika Rosenor, right? Okay, good.
Mayor Protim and trustees and staff, thank you for this opportunity. I am really pleased to say that there was excellent candidates for the open position to represent Buena Vista on the JFE Housing Authority Board of Directors. We conducted interviews in addition to vetting the applications and reviewing their qualifications. And the Board of Directors reviewed those interviews, had a lengthy discussion about who we would like to nominate to take the vacant seat representing Buena Vista. And we were really pleased to land on Mika Rosenor, who has fairly extensive experience in, in local government and in representing equity in those conversations, which includes housing challenges. And we present her as a nomination tonight for you to appoint to the Board of Directors. So I'm happy to field any questions, and Mika is also here to field questions should you have them.
Does anyone have any questions? Would anyone like to make a motion to, to approve the nomination and appointment of Mika Rosenor to the JP Housing Board?
Make a motion.
JP Housing Authority Board. Thank you. And second is Lucrezi. Could we have a roll call, please?
Mayor Protim Baye. Yes. Trustees Lucrezi.
Yes.
Rowe.
Yes.
Nyberg.
Yes.
Swisher.
Yes.
And Floppy.
Yes.
Thank you for representing us.
Thank you.
Okay, now we're going to talk about some, a couple of grants in the next two items. So is this Earl?
This is Earl.
Okay.
Yeah, good evening.
There he is.
Yes, good evening, Mayor Protim and trustees. I have several business items tonight. So thanks for spending time with me. If any questions come up throughout the next three items, please feel free to ask. I'm going to go over some high-level discussions, but always available to answer any questions. We also have some guests joining us for each different business item. So I believe my first one is item B, which is on page 56 of the packet. And it's a request for resolution for supporting the grant for non-motorized state trails from Colorado Parks and Wildlife to fund the restoration of the Whipple Bridge in the Whipple Trails area. And joining me tonight is Kelly Collins. She should be on the line, who is our Chair of the Trails Advisory Board and also the Buena Vista Single Track Coalition. So she sits as Chair on both of those. In collaboration with the Trails Advisory Board, we're applying for 2022 CPW Non-Motorized Trails Grant. This will help us make improvements to the decking on the Whipple Bridge. That's over 32 years old. That's in need of assistance and upgrades. The first 1,500 feet of the Whipple Trail are narrowing in width, and there's a lot of erosion issues. We're seeing over 500 people a day using this trail during our busy summer season. Also, many trail users are trying to get quickly down to the river, so we have seen numerous social trails come together. So we're going to try to address those and find two great areas to put in two official trails down to the river, and then re- Address those and find two great areas to put in two official trails down to the river and then reclaim the other ten or so. And then we're also going to create a couple beautiful scenic overlooks for people to hang out and take their photos. With the Arkansas River and the beautiful mountains in the background. This grant is, the application is due October fourth, which is next Monday. And it requires a. Signed resolution from the Board of Trustees. And again, the highlights are the fifteen hundred feet of Whipple Trail maintenance work. And restoring and building sustainable access to the Arkansas River, on building two official overlook areas. And purchasing lumber to replace the planks on the Whipple Bridge and install the new decking. Right now, the budget for this total project is a hundred and twenty-nine thousand five hundred. We will be getting a lot of in-kind donations and requests from CPW for eighty-three thousand. But the ask for support from the town of Buena Vista is fifteen thousand five hundred dollars. For a total project cost again of one twenty-nine thousand five hundred. This fifteen thousand five hundred is already in the two thousand twenty-two draft budget. And the funds come from fund balance from unused monies in twenty twenty-one. So BOT action tonight is to recommend or prove or deny resolution thirty-nine. And then any questions for us before you do that? We can address those between Kelly and myself.
Any other trustees have questions?
I'll make a motion to approve resolution number thirty-nine.
Move by Row.
Second.
Second by Swisher. Call please. Mayor Pro Tim Fang, yes, trustees La Crezzi, yes, Row.
Yes.
Nyberg.
Yes.
Swisher.
Yes.
Vobie.
Yes. Motion is passed.
Thank you.
Again.
That's great. Appreciate that. All right, here I'm back again. And now we shift to page fifty-nine on the packet. And this is another resolution for the Board of Trustees to review. This one focuses on an opportunity with the Land and Water Conservation Fund. To help support a grant to bring us our new pickleball facility. The creation of the Walton Loop. Trail and the Tater Tot Single Track Trail around the Disc Golf area and a new informational kiosk. So joining me tonight is Leonard Davis of Peak to Peak Pickleball Club. So he too has been a great member with our grant writing team. And he and Jen Eggleson are doing a lot of work to book together this very. In-depth and robust. Application, which is also due on Monday, October fourth, so. And that grant does require this resolution to be submitted. So as you've read in the packet, the focus of this project is. Completing the six pickleball courts, which will be a brand new facility just to the north of our existing tennis courts. So you've already seen out there, we have Miles Construction doing some great work, getting the site prepped. But some monies we had budgeted in our twenty twenty-one budget to get that going. So we'll be ahead of the game for when we get grant funding. It also includes the completion of our Walton Loop. We did point three miles of this proposed one point two mile loop. That was completed in twenty nineteen. We'd like to finish that to give people all abilities. The opportunity to navigate around our river park, which would be great. And it'll also connect our parking lots to our basketball courts and our baseball fields with ADA access. The third component is a Tater Tot Single Track Trail around the same area, which will be parallel to the Walton Loop. And that will create opportunities for kids that are learning to bike or trail run. Or adults that want to trail run and bike to do a loop around our river park before crossing the bridge and getting to more advanced territory. Again, great collaboration with the the Rec Advisory Board, the Trails Advisory Board, the Buena Vista Single Track Coalition and the P2P Pickleball Club. And then in the memo, wrote down the amounts of each line item. So the completion of the pickleball courts in the Walton Loop and the Tater Touch Trail and the informational kiosk. Comes to a total of roughly four hundred and four thousand dollars to complete that. Three hundred seventy-nine thousand five hundred and forty come from grants and donations. Two hundred and three thousand three hundred of which comes from LWCF. The town can get these improvements for a commitment of fifty-five thousand. So forty-five thousand will be coming out of the twenty twenty-two draft budget. And ten thousand dollars would be a fund balance from twenty twenty-one. Unused funds. So any questions from trustees or the mayor? On this.
That these projects look like the same ones that we've applied for grants for before. And are we just applying to a different grantor? Is that the program here?
Yes, I'm glad that you asked that question. So yes, exactly. This is a similar project scope. To what we applied for through GOCO last year in twenty twenty-one, which we wrote the application in twenty twenty. We did not receive funding from them due to a huge amount of applications and a very limited pool of funding. The Land and Water Conservation Funds have a similar opportunity, but it's a different bucket of money. It's actually a federal grant. And so there's some parameters and some requirements to qualify for this fund. The project scope has to be within an existing state park boundary, which we are. We have to dedicate our lands for recreation in perpetuity. And then the other kind of catch point is they require a one hundred percent match. Which is a combination of cash and in-kind services. So that's a deterrent for a lot of municipalities and other agencies to apply. But again, with great collaboration, we have secured funding from Peak to Peak and the county. From JFE County and also the BVSC. And then the town comes in with our. Opportunity. We'll we'll meet that hundred percent match. So we, they've advised us, both GOCO and Land and Water Conservation Fund have advised us to to go for this grant. Because it's a bigger bucket of money with a lot less applicants.
And did you say we have to be in a state park?
Well, it's a state park boundary. So the Buena Vista River Park is in a sixty-two acre parcel that the town of Buena Vista owns. But there's actually about. Forty acres or so that are in a park boundary that refers back to our Land and Water Conservation Fund funding. From nineteen ninety-one that supported the build-out of the bathrooms at the Whipple Bridge. Because the town got funding for that bathroom, they asked that within this proposed boundary. That we only use that land for recreational purposes. If we opt to ever change zoning. Or want to put in, you know, housing or strip mall or whatnot in our river park area. We'd have to work with. The state parks to to address that request.
Thank you. Are there other questions for Mr. Richmond?
I I do have a question. I think it's a great opportunity for the town, but my question is for you. He said ten thousand was out of twenty-one budget that wasn't spent. So forty-five would be out of the twenty-two budget, which we haven't approved. So can we go ahead and vote on this positively?
Yes.
Twenty-two budget.
Great question, yes. So this is not binding the the money at this stage. This is just approving the application.
Okay.
For the grant. If we are awarded the grant, then that's when we would need to commit the funds. To actually sign the contract for for that grant. So we're we're in line with our budget cycle and and that. But that is a consideration for you all. We're going forward for the grant.
Right.
It doesn't bind us to that to that funding yet, but it but it is a a good idea to be comfortable with these amounts. Cause we wouldn't want to back out of a grant unless we really have to.
That was my question.
Thank you. Is there further, are there further questions or discussion? I would entertain a motion.
I'll move that motion.
Swisher. Second. Get faster.
I know. Racer. I'm excited about this one.
Right. Roll call vote, please. Mayor Pro Tim Fang, yes, trustees La Crezzi.
Yes.
Row.
Yes.
Nyberg.
Yes.
Swisher.
Yes.
Vobie.
Yes.
Thank you.
You still up, Earl?
I'm I'm still here. You have just.
Okay.
Waiting for the call.
Okay, we're ready to go with the GOCO All Lands Camping Plan.
All right, my next business item, I believe, is D on page sixty-two of the packet. And joining me for this conversation is Cindy Williams, co-chair of Envision JFE County. So this is a grant that actually JFE County is applying for. And Cindy is helping draft this plan, but I'm very familiar with the scope of the request. It's a great outdoors Colorado planning capacity grant. And so we're looking for agreement for a letter of support from the town of Buena Vista. This grant will help support two main areas. One is the All Lands Camping Plan. The second is the Adopters Phase Two Program. In essence, I'll go over what these these. Plans are gonna be and then talk about some of the details. But as we know, in our county and town, camping is a big deal. People come up and have enjoyed camping for hundreds of years up here. We're discovered. Most of our campgrounds are full. We have a lot of people that are, you know, coming to JFE County because there's a lot of open space and not a lot of regulation. And people are also coming into town and camping in certain sectors of the of our town and also in our adjacent lands. So this will allow us to analyze our options for camping on both the private and public sector. Come up with solutions that help with impacts of our health, of our rivers and ecosystems. And really just oversee an exceptional quality of experience for our campers around JFE County. But also talk about impacts and solutions that relate to sanitation. So how we can make improvements for showers and bathrooms, trash recycling, et cetera. And then the JFE Recreation Adopters Phase Two. Proposal. This idea is a really neat one. We've already been using Phase One to have adopters out. And about in our camping areas, taking a look at who's camping where, what type of fire rings they have. How they're dealing with human waste and parking and et cetera, et cetera. And the Phase Two approach would allow us to create a tool to have our citizens in Buena Vista. To help give us input on our community assets in and around town. So taking a look at our parks and giving us feedback on how our parks are doing or how our trails are doing. So it would be a great asset for the town to get updated feedback on how our facilities are. What shape they are, what improvements we can make. The ask to support this budget is three thousand dollars in cash. Philip and I have talked about this and we found a spot in our community support line item. And then fifty-two hundred dollars in kind staff time over the next three years, so. That's the letter of support in general. And Cindy, if you have anything else to add, feel free to jump on in.
I think that was a great summary. We will support. All all the towns in the county. It builds on programs that we already have in progress. And yeah, we're excited to see it moving forward.
Thank you.
Does anyone have a question?
So again, this is just a letter of support.
Okay.
And to trustee Swisher's question on the previous one, the cash match would be prioritized. It's not committing those dollars yet. But it's it's a letter of support going into next year.
Actually, I have a question, just to make sure I understand. So and what they're looking to do is essentially. Apply for a grant so that they can continue analyzing the area to essentially provide us. With information to better understand how to tackle. Like the camping issues and waste and water. So so it's in a sense like consulting. Would that be kind of? In line with my understanding?
I thi- I think that's pretty fair, but Earl or Cindy, do you wanna respond to that?
Just so I'm.
Yeah, sure. Yeah, absolutely. I'd say specifically on the camping management, the idea, what we're asking for is funding. For a three-year, a full-time resource. That resource would be managed by the National Forest Foundation. For the towns, that resource would provide things like options assessment on in-town camping. If you're interested in that, options assessment on on waste management and and facilities. Options for expanding camping on private lands, those sorts of things. And on the public land side of the fence, they'll be doing specific design and layout for. Designated campsites should should the agencies move to that once their NEEP is done.
Thank you.
Thanks, Cindy. Any other questions? Would entertain a motion to support having Philip sign this letter of support.
Salute.
Row moved.
Second.
Swisher, second. Roll call, please.
Mayor Pro Tim Fang, yes, trustee La Crezzi.
Yes.
Row.
Yes.
Nyberg.
Yes.
Swisher.
Yes. Vobie.
Yes.
Oh, I'd like to step back for a minute into item B and item C. I don't know whether it was specific enough that the the motions had to do with with adopting. Resolution number thirty-nine, which is on page fifty-eight. And resolution number forty, which is on page sixty-one. I don't know if the motions were clear enough that that's what we were adopting.
I have it here in the minutes, a specific teach motion move to adopt resolution number forty, supporting the Land and Water Conservation Fund grant. And then the motion to adopt resolution number thirty-nine, supporting the Colorado Parks and Wildlife grant. Great, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, everyone. We appreciate your time and support. This is just one part of a very large puzzle. And again, our team members are, you know, community folks and. Volunteers and staff from other agencies. And it takes a village to get this all done. And we're writing away and still editing and updating all these grants to make them the best possible presentations we can. And we'll get them in on Monday and be able to breathe a little easier. So thank you for your support.
Thanks, Earl. Good work. Okay, it is eight o'clock. Does anybody need to stand up and stretch? Take a walk, anything like that? Keep going. Okay, so we are ready to move on now to the public hearing for the short-term rental policy. And to begin that hearing, I'd like to ask the staff to present their. Their updates on the policy that we're proposing.
Great. Thank you very much, Mayor Pro Tem, trustees, and those participating with us. Thank you for coming. Very quick intro and then we'll turn it. Uh, very quick intro and then we'll turn it over to uh focusing on uh specific updates. One, I wanna remind everyone that this is a continuation of the public hearing. Um, uh, from a couple of meetings ago, so everything that uh was shared with the public and on the board discussion. At that time was part of the public hearing continuing into this meeting, so just want to acknowledge that. Uh, we do have a few updates uh in between the public hearing dates, there was a work session with the Board of Trustees. On September fourteenth, if I'm not mistaken, uh where the board had a chance to. Discuss and further detail some of the aspects of this draft ordinance and give a little bit further. Direction to the staff, so what you'll see tonight is a is is kind of a ca- continuation of the board's direction on this. And with that, I will turn it over to Joel Benson, who will take you through a few uh the updates and and. Uh, some of the things to consider and discussion tonight.
Thanks, Philip.
Uh, trustees, they have brought them, thank you very much. Um, so um, we've got a few a few slides, not too many. Um, just as a reminder, uh like Phil said, this is a continuation of the public hearing from uh August twenty-fourth, we did that work session September. Uh, fourteenth, this is um, you know, on the heels of a couple of years of conversation and previous work sessions about this. Subject and we've um, which came up because of community input and calls for the board to address short-term rentals. Capacity, um, and the staff, um, probably about eight staff have been working on this. Um, contributing different various perspectives in uh creating a policy is one thing, but implementing is is another thing, so. Those um who have to deal with uh the application process, et cetera. Um, are vital to this whole process, and of course, there's legal perspective that is necessary. Uh, Town Attorney Jeff Parker is also on online and available to answer any questions and provide um his input as well. So, um, as a reminder. Phil, go to the next slide, please, so we've got um, we'll do this uh presentation. And then if the trustees have any clarifying questions to go ahead and ask uh as the staff. Um, at that point, um, you know, open up the public hearing for public comment and. Um, you know, invite the public forward after we hear public comment, uh we'll close the hearing and if there's. Some deliberation, fantastic with you all. If there's other questions, you know, for staff or whoever, we're here at your disposal. And then uh we anticipate some sort of motion either to approve, to deny, to um approve with amendments. Or can to continue this hearing to another uh either date certain or without that certain. So, um, so uh really quick history, we just covered some of this. Um, uh recognizing, of course, housing is an issue in in Chaffey County, it has been, we, you know, we did the housing assessment in twenty sixteen. Um, the uh EDC did some other uh assessment um in twenty fifteen or twenty sixteen as well. Um, recognizing housing i- is an issue, remember the short-term rentals, where where we recognize that they are, it's correlated with. Housing is an issue, but we don't have enough data to find actual causation, and there are many, many variables that will come into play here. Um, it's likely there's a positive correlation on housing stock. Um, and um, that what the regulations are, and so we have to do something about this, so. Um, and again, this is one effort in conjunction with probably half a dozen uh two dozen other things that town is doing. Specific to housing that we can talk about in another conversation, or you know, depending on what you guys want to do, and we've covered some of this. And Joseph did earlier. So again, this proposal is um. The the trustees identified real two kind of problems that related to short-term rentals that we're seeking to uh address. Uh, not totally, but at least this will address those, one is this perceived loss of community feel related to um. An abundance of short-term rentals and and dispersed. Um, and then unabated outside speculation of real estate, and that came up um with the county, I, you guys remember down in the. Uh, our intergovernmental meeting where there have been some people specing, some kind of hedge fund type folks speculating around the county and buying up. Significant tracks in other parts of Colorado, so. Um, anyhow, so we did receive uh some great input uh leading up to August twenty-fourth and after August twenty-fourth. Um, and we've got some changes uh in the proposed draft ordinance. That proposed draft ordinance is in your package, the red line, so you can see what had been changed. Um, and a- as well as a couple of other uh diagrams. Um, so the key changes. Um, the idea of a numeric limit of one license per applicant, we removed that from the draft. It became kind of cumbersome to try to um, to figure out how how to manage that, and also the idea was it helps spread the wealth. Well, if one, if you can have one person for multiple LLCs, um, very easily. This whole spread the wealth concept kind of it becomes moot, and so uh we pulled that out of this draft. Uh, the second change, um, recognizing that uh um, this. Will catch some people kind of mid-construction, um, so and some of their financing and plans. Are tied into this idea of short-term rental, even though um, this is a an annual license issue and not a land use issue. Um, we are, you know, recommending that if there's a certificate of occupancy, if there's a building permit pulled. Um, and you get that already, and you get that CO by uh May thirty-first, that that person. Um, could apply for that short-term rental license, this really would apply to those out-of-county folk. More so than a a primary residence or something, because there's no cap on that. So the idea here is um, it the whatever cap the board decides for out-of-county. Or in county, if there's a building permit, uh, there's a s- already issued, and there's a CO that um. Uh, is received prior to the NMA, that person can apply and. Be on that percentage cap for a license. Over time, the cap would, for attrition, would reduce back down to whatever percentage is is decided should the trustees want. All right, change number three. So um recommending that the percentage cap for out-of-county is increased to six percent from five percent. Um, as per work session, that the in-county remains at three, so that out-of-county, there's a, there's some licenses that are still available. Um, in county, uh three percent, all that currently are in-county licenses are about point six percent. One-six and a half percent, and so there's quite a bit of room there, and then the primary residence has no cap. Okay? Um, we're also, this was kind of a an outstanding question, and staff is providing a recommendation. Um, the one license is allowed per address rather than per parcel. Um, and this is an idea, uh, the per parcel would be, uh, I have. Um, a house in the ADU, and that could be on one parcel. So originally, we talked about just one per parcel, and we're recommending that um. It's one per address, so that ADU would give its own address, um, and the house would have its own address, so. One hundred and one hundred A, right, it could be different addresses. And this really helps comply with fire department needs and um just kind of eases some of the uh administrative. burdens on this, clean cleaner, clear licensing. The fifth one is a minor change, uh, as you guys are recall, we, the 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 direction has been to. Um, include entities, business entities as out-of-county primarily because of the. The ease of um licensing and LLC within within town, because you don't have to prove any. Sort of address in order to get that license, uh, Town Attorney Parker is here to comment more on that if we need to. And in doing so, we noticed that there was a um potential for. Uh, it the the code was quiet on percentage of ownership of a place, and so it it built in some straw man potential. For particular properties, and so um, that change is a minor change to clarify the language. Um, that if any ownership of the properties, an entity that would be considered out-of-county rather than that fifty percent. As a natural person. Okay? Um, this is uh, change six is to help with consistency and ease of processing applications, and it it just says that. Everyone has to supply a driver's license instead of only Chaffey County. Um, we did do a couple, these are a couple of comments that came up at the last. Hearing that um we did look at, and we we can't really. Well, the first one, it was this idea, as you guys might recall, hey, if there's a minimum, you know, you have to set up this minimum number of nights, and if you don't. Rent it, short-term rental for those number of nights, we can pull it off the market, you know, so to speak, out of the pool. Um, but we don't have any foreseeable way to actually enforce that, and so we did not include that in there. Absent some way to do it. Um, another idea was um, hey, why don't we require trash plan, particle plants, and order removal plan, local contact, all of these things. Some of our of this is already required, code six one-twenty-six already allows for that in a STR standards. Standards and specifications, and um so we don't need to add that to the code, because it's already there, we just. Have already changed the application process to include these, including like a recycling plant in it. Um, so again, to summarize, uh, the next steps is I will stop talking. And then we'll receive public comment, close the hearing, uh, the public comment portion of the hearing. Um, and then the trustees deliberate and call for some sort of a motion, approved, deny, approve with amendments, or continue. And with that, um, and we're open for questions from you all.
So we're gonna ask your questions right now. Um, and when you say that you have one license for one address, is there any downside to somebody getting an additional address? Like, does that change their property taxes or um, you know, any any other costs that they may not be perceiving?
Well.
Water taps or?
No, it would still be the same property, same parcel, it would just have a a second address tied to that.
Okay.
So like suite A, suite B, something, so it doesn't functionally change. Um, the structure of the property itself, it's a kind of a uh more fire department issue. And we we do recognize our addressing for ADUs, yeah, so it it goes along with.
Bless you.
Using. Okay. And then on on the second item, where we have the projects that are already underway. Is May thirty-first long enough? For somebody who has a building permit now, can they get their project done and get a CO by May thirty-first?
Some some may not, so I think it's an area the board could consider extending out uh that date to capture more or allow for. Our building periods, most of them, uh, most of the ones we were considering were before the moratorium. Building building permits that were pulled before the moratorium. Um, but yeah, we recognize that those that maybe are turning in in September, let's say, yeah, that's a short runway for build project in this area, so. Um, I know the board received one public comment, I believe, related to that, so again, that's that's something kind of up to the board. Um, in terms of process, it's really just a date that staff will be able to uh track against. So something for you all to consider.
Would we burden staff severely if we allowed you to accept extensions from people?
Beyond the.
Yeah, on the May thirty-first.
Paula, do you have any thoughts on that?
It'll be interesting, you know, we'll make it work, it's, but I think from my perspective. It'd be nice if we had a date, you know, instead of May thirty-first, September thirtieth, twenty twenty-two, to where we definitely know.
Push it out, push the whole.
Versus someone coming in and requesting an extension, and we had to determine how far along they are in their process, and. You know, what if that process isn't until January fifteenth of twenty twenty-three? You know, where do we?
Well, they need, and they need to be diligently working on it to on building the project.
Well, and some of this too is um designed for those who have their plans dependent on this. So, right, something something to keep in mind, as opposed to some some folk who have been. You know, every six months, they get a new building permit, and they've been working on the same project for years. They don't seem to have a a dependency on a term around on the license. And that is as part of the conversation.
And the person that I was talking about an extension on that, uh, they mentioned that it was gonna be their primary residence, so it wouldn't even apply. To them, technically, so.
That's correct.
Yeah. What does the, what do the trustees want to do with that? Leave it or change it?
Uh, maybe if I may, um, that might be after public comment, that's.
Okay.
Deliberation should just be clarifying.
Sure, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
I know that uh, one of the other points of of feedback and a lot of discussion that we've had is around the entities. Concept, um, which is a hard one to grapple with, um, I know the board, if if you want to ask clarifying questions now. Uh, Town Attorney uh is online, if you would, if you would like to clarify that now or wait till after. Your choice.
Sure, let's clarify it now.
What exactly would you like clarified? Well, yeah, I I mean, I can give you just a summary of of at least the rationale for treating entities. As an out-of-county um applicant, um, it's it's basically, I know we've had some some emails and some comments saying it's it's easy to. Just take a look on the Secretary of State's website and determine whether or not the entity's got a local address or not. And that's correct, you can do that, you can just get on the Secretary's website and get information about these entities and see where their registered agent is, see what their address is. But the issue isn't verifying that, the issue is that any entity can basically have a local address if they want to. I mean, there's no requirements regarding what you use as an address for your entity, so. You could end up having every single um LLC or partnership or whatever other kind of entity you want to operate under. With a Buna Vista or a Chaffey County address, and then they would all be exempt from the from the limits for out-of-county. Um, uh, percentages, and so I think that that's the main issue, and you know, no matter how hard you try to put some kind of. You know, local entity requirement. Um, impo- impose a requirement like that, and my heart, you try and do that, there's always a workaround, and so. I I think that's the that's the main reason why um we were just, we're just informing you that that's an issue you'll run into, and we we don't have a legal opinion about. What you should or shouldn't do, it's just that if you think you're gonna be able to limit out-of-county entities by requiring that they have a local address. Um, it won't work, because it's easy to change, so that's the basic reason.
Thank you, Jeff.
You're you're welcome.
Any other clarifying questions from the trustees? Okay, uh, I'd like to close that part of the public hearing. And um. Do we, are we ready to hear public comment at this point? Great, so how about um, in the order in which you sign in? So, big Catherine. They state your name and address. They state your name and address for the record. And for some people, not necessarily for you, but we have heard from some people before. So if they would try not to repeat their previous comments, that would be great.
My name is Catherine Eichel. I rent a property here in BV at 202 South Colorado Avenue. Chris, all thank you for hearing my comments. And I do recognize we have a limited data source that we're trying to make decisions from. And there are many complicated variables in this. But I do want to speak a little bit to the second purpose. It wasn't on this slide, but in the packet, one of the main purposes of these changes was concerns that the, that short terms were competing with tying up long term housing. Since we don't have the data, we don't have the full spectrum of how many long term rentals are available. And I can't speak to that, but I can't speak to my own personal experience. So I lost housing in 2020. I've lived in the valley here for six and a half years. I've built a successful small business here. I lost housing due to a split. And it took me with a budget of $1,800. It took me nine months to find a rental. And I know a lot of people here, I sat on our Facebook pages every single day and would rush to compete for different rentals. But there were so many other competitors that I simply couldn't find housing for that long. So I just want to bring that up. I know we don't have an exact correlation of data, but people in my income bracket. So I am not, I make above the average median income. So I don't qualify for any affordable housing assistance. Yet I do not come close to being able to buy a house. EBN list cost of a housing here in BV was 515K in August. I of course can't come close to being able to purchase a home here. So we're, I'm in this whole sector of this middle income. We can't find anything to rent. We can't buy anything. And you're losing us. So you're losing people with 10 to 15 years of experience. You're losing small business owners. We're leaving this county. Many of my friends left last year. They had to, they were forced out of housing as their houses were bought. And I will probably also be forced to leave probably within the next year. And I just want to point out, yes, it does mess with some people's changing these STR rules. Does mess with some people's current housing plans. And I feel that that's sad, but I have $40,000 worth of work booked for next year that I may or may not be able to fulfill because I will probably lose housing this year. So yes, we don't have the exact numbers to correlate short term competition with long term rentals. But we do know that our housing prices have dramatically increased in the last year. We do know that our long term rentals have dramatically decreased in availability in the past year, even if we don't have those exact numbers. So I appreciate you looking at this issue and considering it. And I know that you guys are also considering other housing initiatives, including land use development and that kind of thing. So just wanted to kind of put that into the larger perspective for you guys. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Linda Barbeau.
My name is Linda Barbeau. I live at 425 Cedar Street. And first I'd like to thank you for taking the time, not passing the ordinance as it was submitted two months ago. Thank you for your time working on improving the short term rental ordinance. And I can see and really appreciate that you listened to citizen input from the last public comment opportunity. And you actually made some great improvements. I don't think it's perfect by a long shot. It still could use some work. But there's one, still one major issue, which the attorney just spoke to. The fact that anyone whose property is owned at an LLC or trust is treated as out of county or non owner occupied. The rationale stated in the memo says that this addresses a significant loophole, but it doesn't say what the loophole it is intended to address. I've not seen it explained anywhere. The only thing I can see that it might be related to is the issue mentioned in item one of the outline of changes. If it is the same rationale mentioned in item one of preventing one person from owning multiple properties through multiple LLCs, you have already stated that the percentage cap makes that point moot and did away with the numeric limit. So if that isn't the issue, but is the issue with LLCs and trusts. You have proposed no cap on owner occupied and a 3% cap on locally owned, non owner occupied because you don't want to harm local homeowners. But that is exactly what this does. It effectively prevents the local homeowner whose home is owned in one of these legal forms from having a short term rental because the town is already within nine units of reaching the 6% proposed cap. Now, if you raise that cap, then that would allow for a local person whose property is owned in one of these entities to maybe have a chance at getting a short term rental in. If you don't raise that cap, it could be years before the attrition rate that you're counting on will allow for more units. This is extremely unfair to local residents who have their property in an LLC for legal protection of their assets or a revocable family trust for estate planning. These are very common ways that individuals take title. And I find it hard to understand why the town would want to interfere in a residence estate planning and the safety, protection of their assets or penalize a local person who's simply trying to protect their assets. It is easy to prove who owns the LLC or trust and very easy to prove that that person actually lives in Buena Vista with their driver's license and voter registration. It's a very simple thing to do. Or you can just come by my house and knock on my door. It's a small town. You see me here every day. I would ask that you give a detailed and rational explanation for this restriction. Modify it to achieve whatever that rationale is and prevent undue harm to local residents or do away with that restriction entirely. Thank you.
Thank you. David.
David Evans, I'm building a 357 Crossman. Sounds like you have already, thanks for the opportunity to, to comment. Sounds like you've already read my comment because I emailed it to Paula and it sounds like she got it out to the board. Just the specific section six, part H, where you talk about May 31st certificate of occupancy is certainly at the moment is a little unrealistic in terms of getting a certificate of occupancy. I've got my building permit September 14th and hoping to break ground a couple of weeks from now. But to get it finished by then is with the current labor difficulties and material shortages. All the things I hear down at Ponchalumba. It's, it's kind of unrealistic to get us to the good of occupancy by May 31st. And I wondered maybe September 28th of 2022 would be more realistic. Because any weather delays and I won't get finished by, by May 31st. For example, trusses, which would usually take four or five weeks, are the second or third week in January. Party board siding is at least the end of the first quarter of 2022, which pushes everything else back. So I just wonder if you could, and listening to, I can't remember who said that comment that you've got people who are pushing a building permit out every six months or whatever. I can see why you want to have a specific date to get that finished. So, but just a little bit more time might help. That was my comment.
Okay. Thank you.
And what I would suggest is September 28th next year. Is it possible to ask a question? Because maybe I misunderstood something.
You may ask a question. We don't have to respond.
Okay. I talked this morning, I spoke to somebody at the city regarding what the, if this is your primary residence. Is there a cap on that or is that part of that 3%? Because it was not clear to me from reading the, the information because this tended to be my primary.
Yeah. If it's your primary residence, then it's not limited.
Okay.
So you're in the town. Oh, wow. Of course you're in the town. We'll be talking about this. Okay.
Okay. Well, I can relax. But I think there might still be other people who are, who are in similar situations. Thanks for your time. Appreciate it.
Okay. Don.
Thank you. Yes, Don Nelson. I live at 725 Marquette Avenue in town. And I think everybody's doing a great job of addressing some of my concerns already regarding the LLCs, et cetera. Obviously, we need to protect our assets from liability concerns on these units and things like that. So that goes without saying, we can't, can't really be stripped of those rights. I don't think by local regulations like this, there's got to be an alternative, a better option to maintain the rights of the people that are already in the community. I've been here in this community for about 10 years. And the long term plan for me was to purchase a duplex and make revenues on the other side and eventually build an ADU. Now I'm a little nebulous on what the definition of a primary residence is, and that concerns me. Because technically all of those units are on my lot. So I don't know how that's going to kind of pan out exactly. But beyond that, I think I just want to bring it down to more of a micro level on the impact of individual citizens on a real estate agent. I can tell you in the last 60 days, I've lost at least two commissions because of pending short term rental regulations. People concerned about second home purchases and how they're going to be able to pay for those. And that impacted me directly financially, probably on the order of $30,000 because of just the consideration of this regulation. Okay. Now we can multiply that across the board for all the Realtors in town who are always dealing with people in this market that are looking for second homes. So that's money that doesn't go down to small business owners in town where I might take my family out for dinner. Right? Those people are being directly impacted by the consideration of this regulation. And these are community members that everybody here is, of course, intending to protect and to do the best for. But there's two sides to the coin, right? There's a lot to consider here on the economic level that I think you guys really need to put some thought into. And so I would propose an extension here before we really pass a regulation like this. We really need to consider how it's impacting the local citizens, people that have been here 10, 20, 30 years. They're going to be impacted by this. Not just the folks that are looking for, you know, low income housing or workforce housing, but all the people that have made this community what it is for the last 30 years, they're going to be impacted. People could be brought out of retirement because of this regulation, because they can no longer make what they were making before. These are things that are very serious for a lot of people in town. I hope you guys can consider that. I know that this is a very, very difficult issue. But I really think it needs serious consideration because it's going to have a big impact on a lot of people in town. The people that have been here for a long time. So that's really all I have to say. I think on the macro level, there's a lot of things going on economically that you just, you're not going to be able to control. We've seen it in states. We've seen it across the country. Look at what happened in Denver when they, you know, when they changed zoning regulations down in the Highlands District. It used to be gang ridden. And the entire face of the neighborhood changed over 20 years. That wasn't because of what Denver did. They started the ball rolling, but it's really because of macroeconomics across the country. So we need to figure out how to juggle this with a lot of wisdom. I think that's what's needed here as we consider this. So.
Thank you. Corey Lickenter. Who are going to speak?
I will. Nothing. My name's Corey Flickinger. We're not local from out of state. I had nothing, did not come here planning on speaking, so I had nothing prepared. But just thought I'd go ahead and say, just tell you our situation, how it's going to affect us. We do, it's my wife, Rashana Flickinger, we really do empathize with people that are having trouble finding affordable housing. I'm a builder in Texas where we live. And I build lower income housing and I enjoy that aspect. That's kind of my niche in the building market in Texas. And it's becoming an issue there, not as, not as bad as it is here yet, but it is becoming an issue. And, but what it's doing for what we did three years ago in November, we bought a lot here with the intention of building a second home that like gentleman said, that we can only afford by putting on short term rental market. So passing this, we're going to probably have to just sell it and take, take our investment. So I guess a community that's a little more friendly to short term rentals. And, you know, kind of sad since we've been coming here multiple times a year, not just once or twice, but several times a year. Our kids have even been coming up here with us because they've been anticipating this being a place that we were going to have a place for a long time. But anyway, I think one of my frustrations in it is, is that I haven't really ever been able to hear how restricting it from folks like us, keeping us from being able to do what we want to do is going to make it affordable. I'm not sure how it's going to make, how it's going to bring that average cost of the house and BV down from 515,000 or whatever it is, or how it's going to bring the wage of the worker up to be able to afford that. I don't know how it's going to satisfy or fix that dilemma. Just wanted to share kind of since we're here.
Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Okay, Jessica.
Thank you for taking public comment. I appreciate the opportunity to speak. My name is Jessica Edie. I live at 814 West Main Street. I am currently without permanent housing due to a lack of affordable housing here. I understand both sides of the issue. I travel for work. I work for the University of Colorado at Anshut's Medical Campus. And I stay in Airbnbs at least twice a month usually for work. And so I really appreciate the opportunity that home sharing offers. And I really couldn't do my job without it. On the flip side, I'm experiencing the other side of that where I, much like Catherine spoke about earlier, am not able to afford housing here because I make too much to qualify for low income. And I don't make enough to afford a house. And as of the past six months, I no longer am making enough to be able to afford rent. So I've been looking a little bit into, you know, this issue is a problem across the country and definitely across all of Colorado, not specific to BV. And there is an association which was stated earlier between short term rentals and increase in rent prices. So there's a study from Harvard Business Review that looked at this issue and said that as you look, as you increase short term rentals in a community, the average annual increase in rent in that community goes up by about one fifth. So there's obviously like forfeits of other factors that explain and contribute to this. But I do think the short term rental issue is a problem. I would like to think of myself as a community member that contributes to Buena Vista. And I've been here basically since 2016 on and off trying to make the housing thing work. And I have worked with law enforcement, public health, school systems, et cetera, doing drug abuse prevention. And so I would like to see people like me be able to stay here. I know that I'm not the only one, and I know that I'm probably the best case scenario of a lot of these situations because I am privileged to have a great job and. And be invested in this community, but. I am living in a series of short term rentals ironically right now as I look for long term housing here. And so I just wanted to state my case because I think it's a little bit unique and. I would appreciate the consideration of the Board of Trustees to. Continue pushing on the cap on short term rentals.
Do. Okay. We have reached the end of the people who had signed up. So. I'll close that part of the hearing.
Real quick, we want to check.
Oh, Jeff.
Check on. Check on the zoom.
Check on there, sure.
So yes, if anybody wants to speak in public comment, please use the raise hand function in the zoom. Or. Not sure if anybody's on. Star nine on your phone.
Yeah, it looks like everyone's using the app. I see a name next to everyone, and I do not see any hands raised, and there's been no activity in chat.
Michael. Okay, so we have reached the end of public comment. So now we have another opportunity for members of the board to ask questions.
I think the only thing we're considering from before was potentially the the date change for the COs. May thirty first, potentially pushing that further. I think September twenty eighth is too far out personally. I can understand maybe another two months, but at some point. That door has to close and we have to start working one way or the other, so. So I understand some of those concerns, and I think people are always going to be purchasing homes and moving forward with. You know, the things they want to do, but. We do only have so much staff and so much time and ability, so. I propose potentially maybe. Beginning of July. Something around there, give a little bit more time. To maybe. Soothe over that idea, but. I wouldn't go as far as saying.
One month.
Or one night or one one.
You're saying beginning of July, May thirty first.
It's May thirty first.
It can take people a long time to build now.
Right.
Builders are so far out.
May I make a comment on that?
Yeah.
The. There there is only going to be a limited pool of people who qualify for that extension, so it wouldn't be like. There'll be people just constantly coming in, it's going to add to that. You have to basically have a building permit at the time that this ordinance is passed. To even qualify, and then that then that pool is a limited pool of people who can maybe get their CO by the deadline. So I I just want to make sure that trustees understand that. It isn't like you're opening the window or the door for just continuous applications, there's going to be all these people with a building permit as of the date of the. Ordinance, and then they're going to have so much time to finish their construction. So just to make sure you didn't think it was going to open the door further.
Helps that helps me out a little bit there, I didn't realize that.
Yeah, I think the May thirty first is totally reasonable as a deadline and. You know, if people are building with the intention of having it be their primary occupancy. Occupancy and. Short term renting, NADU, then they don't have to worry about that at all because there is no cap on that, so. I think having that deadline, I think is. Totally reasonable, but you know, I'm open. To whatever.
Cindy, what do you think?
So Devon, would you move, you would. You would want to leave at May thirty first, is that what you're saying?
That's what I'm saying, I'd say leave it as. Jeff explained, it's a small group of people that would say if we pass this ordinance tonight. It would. Be. The people would have to have the certificate of occupancy by May thirty first, but they also have to have their building permit. Right now. Correct, Jeff, is that what you're explaining? Right.
Yeah, that's correct, that's correct, so. And part of my intent was, I'm not encouraging you to what what one way or the other, part of my intent was to say if you did extend the deadline for getting your CO. You wouldn't have a bunch of. Bunch more. Individual property owners coming in, it would just be, the most you could have would be the people with a building permit now. So.
Well, Jeff, with the ordinance becoming effective thirty days after we publicize it. After we pass it. Does that mean that you can still get a building permit?
Let me make sure I actually have the deadline correct.
The last line in the ordinance itself. Is.
I'm just.
Shall become effective thirty days from publication.
Yeah, I'm just, I need to find the provision in the ordinance that actually sets that. There it is, here we go. Reading it really quickly here. Yeah, so basically, twenty to twenty eighth today is the date that the building permit must have been obtained. So that's the date we have in the ordinance. So it wouldn't be thirty days from the ordinance, it's the twenty eighth today.
Okay.
So there wouldn't be more after, there wouldn't be any more people eligible after today.
Gotcha, okay.
Okay, so if we. Pass. Guys decide what the new cap is, what the new, because as houses are built, the cap. Will include more numbers, and you guys were, and would that be decided?
Yeah, so the the way this proposal now is at six percent cap. And then there's. The bill, the. Building permits. As of today, if someone closes by May thirty first, whatever. Actually, anytime between now and May thirty first they close, and it's written in here, then they have seven days to actually come and. Apply, so it's not, hey, I'm doing it in January and then I can. Figure things out and over the next five months, it's like closed and you're assuming your plans are to have that. Short term rentals will come apply for us. So starting in January first, so after there's a period for applications for new. You know, that buffer zone. Those folks who have a CEO, they can add up. You know, I think there's a. I don't know how many will applicants there will be from these, you know, there's a hundred some building permits active right now, a hundred and sixty or so, so. By that deadline, May thirty first or whatever, that will determine the end date. And so it'll be up to seven percent, some point two, six point two, whatever it is. And then Jeff's got it written in there that. That number over time will go back down to that six percent unless the trustees decide to change something in the future.
But I think what Cindy's asking about is. Is the number of housing units determined?
In a in a normal cycle, we'll start from how the ordinance is written, in a normal cycle, by August thirty first each year, the town will establish the total residential housing stock. So that's that date where where the percentage is turned into a number. Right? And then the renewal period, so that people can apply before any new. Applications are are considered is during the month of October. Okay, so that's how that's that's what's in the ordinance.
Okay, so Cindy, that's on page seventy four.
So the reason for my question was. If we're going to have. Changed the cutoff date, we want it before the date that you guys are deciding if. They increase or not, you want that. You want that house included in the number if it's going to be so, and you said August, so I would think the most that. You could move that out was August.
Okay. I like August.
Makes sense.
Yeah, absolutely.
The. The. Certificate, certificate of occupancy has to have been received by August thirty first. I don't really feel about that, this is on people who have a current building permit.
August of this year, I guess it's fine, I think it's a small number, I think it's.
Yeah, August of twenty two.
Yeah, I'm fine, whatever.
We have consensus on that. Arm, what do you think?
I agree with him.
August thirty first, okay. Okay. So. Anything else that anybody else wants to consider changing?
May I ask a question?
Yes.
I was wondering if we do know, and I don't, you know, do we know how many in county residents actually. Do a short term rental that is under an LLC or trust? On that. Say I might not have that part as, I mean, I was just. Thinking and I was curious.
There is three. That are currently in LLC. Our trust.
Yeah, I think in relation to that, an important thing to remember is that. If you already have an LLC and you're in county. And you'll be counted into. The out of county. With this ordinance, but you don't have to change that. You will already have that, so it's it's not like you have to change. Your number, you'll be counted in that number of out of county, and as long as. You're in good standings, I don't see any issues.
Can I, can I clarify one thing, Mayor Proton?
Sure, yeah, please.
Paula, I believe in the numbers that we've been working on. And the assumptions on the number of current licenses towards. The out of county and where that stacks up against the six percent, I believe we've already considered the in county that are. Owned by an LLC already in that number, is that correct?
The out of county number shifts.
Thank you.
Thanks for that.
Some of those out of county ones are the ones that are already over the six percent level. Well, not not exactly.
Five and a half.
Within nine.
Yeah.
Six percent allows them nine more, I think.
Could make that six percent, we could raise it to seven percent, gives them a little bit more cushion in there.
I think some six percent's fine.
Stay with the six percent.
I agree with Stephanie.
Yeah, I agree as well.
LLCs are one way that people. Protect themselves from certain liabilities and risks, but it's not the only way. I mean, there's also insurance and umbrella insurance or, you know, whatever kind of. Policy you want. Somebody will write it for you.
Right.
Mayor Proton, just just want to remind you that we do have trustee Volpe.
Hey, that is still way.
Yeah, I I agree with everything everybody's saying, I don't think we're off topic, I think. We're we're moving on, as far as the LLC thing goes. The property ownership and the business operation are are completely different, so when you when you say that. When you're trustee, when you're talking about. Protecting yourself, operating the business under an LLC, of course, makes sense, but the property ownership is what what I I think there's confusion on and. The property, there's three properties that are owned in LLCs or trusts. It's nominal, and as Devon said, they're part of the cap. So as long as they maintain their license that we're there, they're existing entities are fine as it is, so I I. Sorry, I'm not there, you guys, it's it's hard to participate remotely, but I think we're we're on target.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Dave.
Okay. Anybody else have anything they want to add?
Yeah, I think this is. This has been a lot of work, I really want to thank town staff and the rest of the trustees. For working on this, I think this has. Been a big project, and I know it's not going to be something that everyone is going to like, but I think it's a great step forward in. Working on. How to take care of housing and short term rentals here in town. You know, I think. You know, I know firsthand, I have a lot of friends who work and live here in the valley and some of them. Some citizens have spoken here tonight that it's really hard to live here. And, you know, I live in a two hundred square foot apartment because that's what I can afford. And I can't afford a house, and I know pretty much everyone that works in the service industry. As well can't afford a house and has been kicked out of housing specifically for short term rentals. And, you know. I hear the argument about the economy and bringing business and money here, and I. I spoke about it last time, it just really makes me think of. The whole Lorax and about, I used to teach it to kids back in the day, and just about how. Biggering and getting things bigger and bringing more and more people here and more money, is that really? What are we going to be left with at the end of the day? And that's how I see this regulation is that it's not. Directly, it's not going to fix affordable housing for us. We're not going to be, I'm not going to all of a sudden afford a house tomorrow, but I think it's a step in the right direction to. Help protect our town and really help people to live and stay here, so. Rowdy back here? I don't know if there's anything else I'd like to make a motion to approve. The ordinance, what's it called?
With with the.
I can't find it now.
Ordinance number fifteen.
Ordinance number fifteen as amended. Second.
Action by Roe, second by Nyberg. And by as amended, the only amendment that I'm aware of is that date of.
Date, yeah.
It's thirty first twenty two, for those who have a. A building permit in place as of September twenty eighth, twenty one. Shall we have a roll call vote?
For the discussion.
Oh. Is there more discussion? Yeah, I don't know.
I'm helping you.
Great, that feels great, you are big help.
I have a comment.
Yes.
We have worked on this for a long time. I doubt that it is perfect. We have to start somewhere and see how it's gonna work. And. It isn't like. This is set in stone, it can be changed if it doesn't work, but we have to start somewhere for our community.
Well stated, thank you.
Exactly.
More discussion by the board? Okay, roll call vote. Mayor Pro Tim Fay, yes, trustee Lecretzey.
Yes.
Trustee Rome.
Yes.
Trustee Nyberg.
Yes.
Trustee Swisher.
Yes.
Trustee Volpe.
Yes.
Okay. So now. We are ready for trustee staff interaction. Thank you all for your participation. Really appreciate it. Thank you all for your participation. Really appreciate it. So, since you didn't get to give a report, I'd like to.
Oh, boy. Yeah, I could have filled up a report. There is a lot, a lot happening. I will, a couple of updates. We have received responses to our, our RFP for architectural services for our police station with the option for town hall. In addition to that, we received four, four complete responses to that. And we have an internal group that is, that I've tasked with evaluating those proposals and we'll be interviewing our top two candidates next Monday and Tuesday. So looking forward to that and pretty excited to keep, to continue down that path. And let's see. Opportunities abound. We, we've been made aware. The school has put out an RFP for a lot of their properties. They're inquiring about purchase. People interested in purchasing their, their, some of their properties. So that's playing into some of the discussions. So we'll, we'll just kind of continue forward while we, we take all of that in and, and, you know, evaluate opportunities as they arise. So that's, that's a big one that's continuing. Oh, boy. Apologize, I should have written better notes, but I think that, I'll, I'll say that's it for now. I did make a note that, that you wanted to discuss the ACA special use permit and trustee staff. So we can pick that up now if you'd like.
Yeah, I'd like to, I'd like to pick that up. And then also perhaps the shipping container hotel as to whether, I mean, I don't know if that's something we even need to discuss or can discuss.
Mark is on, who can speak in more detail. He did help me to understand at one clarification, the shipping container hotel, which is that so far they've only submitted a minor subdivision application. Once they submit a site plan application, that's the point at which the board would be able to call that up.
Okay.
To board consideration if you would like to do that. So again, Mark can speak in more detail. If you have more questions about that, you can also share more about the ACA special use permit if you'd like.
Mark, would you be willing to enlighten us about the ACA?
So, the, yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
ACA has submitted an application for an expansion to their existing pit. They call it the Avery Pit. That is located currently at the northeast corner of Greg Drive and Rodeo Road. They are seeking an expansion of their gravel pit on the south side of Greg, east of Rodeo Road. So they have put in for a special use permit for the extraction of that aggregate on that property that is currently zoned industrial in the town limits.
So would they be required to do the same sort of birmingham that they've done on the north property?
They are, they are going to have to meet the state regulations when it comes to mining. That does mean some birmingham and they have proposed that as part of their application that we will review as part of their special use permit.
Seems like we want to see it. I mean, I, I would like to see it, I think.
Mark, do you think we should entertain a motion from the board now to go ahead and, and, and prepare to bring that forward?
That would be great for us to be able to give direction to the applicants that not only will they have the special use permit, go to the planning commission, but that the application will then move on to the board of trustees if that's what they so choose. So technically it's a special use permit. The, the provisions for call up are for site plans. So that is one of the things that I would just want to clarify from Jeff, given our code. The call up procedures are for site plans. This is a special use permit that goes to the planning commission.
Well, so then it's, it wouldn't be called up at this point if it's, there's no site plan involved at this point.
Yeah, the, the, the special use permit, it, it doesn't necessarily, it has a site plan associated, but it is not a separate application right, as of right now.
Well, my suggestion then would be, why don't we, um, take a look at it offline and then the trustees will still have opportunity to consider this again when, um, the permits actually filed, Mark, right? And so
Yeah. Yeah, the permit has, the permit has been filed.
Okay.
The special use permit.
It's interesting because there's a site plan associated with it. And the code allows for call up of a site plan. But there's no separate site plan application. Is that right, Mark? I haven't read the code on that issue. I'm just trying to
Yeah, correct.
Logic here. And, and the use by special review goes directly to the planning commission. And then there's I assume there's, it doesn't go to the trustees unless there's an appeal or something, correct?
Correct. So section six point five of the UDC is broken up into different applications. So six point five one deals with site plans. And so site plans are applied to any use that doesn't involve a change to other requirements and development, tenant improvements in construction, single family dwellings. So those things don't require a site plan. Site plans are split into two different versions. There's a minor site plan, which is administrative review. So that's for ten or fewer dwelling units or less than ten thousand square feet of gross floor area for non-residential. Then there, though, if it's more than ten dwelling units or more than ten thousand square feet of, of commercial, then it's a major site plan that goes to the planning commission for approval. The special use permit is in section six point five two, and that is for providing the town the ability to evaluate proposed development in land uses that have unique and widely varying characteristics to make sure that's compatible with surrounding areas. In the special use permit section, there isn't specifically a call up for special use permits.
Yeah, and so this is not a standalone site plan that typically doesn't, so I guess I'm, this is, I'm, I'm working through this quickly here while we're talking. I'm actually looking at the provisions that you're reading, Mark. And, you know, for me, there is no separate approval of a site plan. It's just incorporated into the special use permit procedure. And there's no, there's no call up for that. So I actually don't think the board can actually call this up or could be sent to the board because it's really just a special use permit review and, and there's no call up procedure in there. And the site plan is just a portion of the special use permit. So I don't think the board has authority to call it up. That's that's my answer here.
My question is, where the existing pit is? And I'm just trying to get a visual on this. Where the existing pit is, you have Greg Drive. Is it going to be across the road?
It would be directly across the road from, from the existing pit on the south side of Greg Drive. Would, yeah. Yeah.
I'm bringing it up, Mark.
So it's right there.
Right in there, yeah.
Okay.
It would be south of the current pit and south of Greg Drive. Greg Drive is on the south side of the existing pit. And so this would be the property that's directly abutting public works facilities.
There's public works.
So there aren't any houses in there, right?
There, that property is currently vacant. And it, the southern border of, there are three parcels in there that total a hundred and five acres. The southern border of the, that third parcel to the south is the town limits. So it is county, county properties outside of town directly abutting this proposal.
Theoretically, it's not currently vacant, though. A bunch of animal butcher.
You know, Mark, can I ask you?
That whole section? That whole section, they dig it up?
It would be that hundred and five acres from Greg Drive all the way down to the town limits, which are approximately where on the screen it says Johnson Ditch, right in that area. So it's all the land that's abutting the rodeo grounds.
And their, their special use permit says that they would end up fully utilizing that expansion over the course of thirty years. So this is not a, this is not a tomorrow change. This is a long-term project for them.
That's town property, right? No?
No.
No, it's their property.
In town limits, it's not.
Okay, so it's different than the town property that.
Correct.
This is a pit or are these like mounds of, maybe it's both.
Think of it very similar to this.
Side, okay.
Which they will eventually reclaim. You know, this will be whatever the process is that the state requires to bring it back to a certain state. So it won't be left like this. That's a state requirement.
Waterfront property.
Right, right.
Obviously, I was trying to get a grasp of exactly, in my mind, exactly where it is and
Ice skating rink.
Thanks.
May I ask another question just to follow up on the question I was asked?
Yeah.
Sorry to jump in. I'm just trying to make sure I, I understand. So, um, what I want, I want to ask Mark about is, um, I know the special use permit review process requires a site plan. But I guess the question is, wouldn't the site plan still require review and approval pursuant to section six point five one? Is there a reason why it's not being, I, I mean, because the code allows for concurrent review of a site plan along with a use by special review? And so I guess I'm wondering, would there not be both the approval of the site plan and approval of the special use permit as part of the overall review of this proposed application?
I, yeah, I, I guess that is kind of the question. We've never really made a distinction for a special use permit because we've handled the site planning portion of a special use as part of the special use.
Yeah, no, and so I totally understand that now. I appreciate that. But I, so, so I think I'm going to, I'm going to modify my answer a little bit, not to make it more complicated. I had to kind of read through the code while I was thinking and the hamster upstairs doesn't move as fast as it should. But, um, I, I, I actually think that your code specific in section six point five point one C contemplates that there'll be a site plan review and a special use permit review. And the fact that they're occurring concurrently is totally fine. It's totally the way that I think it should be handled, but that doesn't mean that if it doesn't mean that the call up procedures allowed for site plans doesn't apply. So I think that, um, I'm going to change my response based on a little more in-depth reading to say that if, if you can follow the call up procedures for the site plan if you want to. Sorry, Dick, take a little time to do that, but I had to read through it.
Can I jump, can I jump onto that with another question? And maybe this gets to Mark's expertise as well. I wonder if there's a differentiation in terminology between like capital site plan, which is defined in table six point three. And is defined by number of residential units or square feet, as Mark mentioned, and lowercase site plan, which is simply a drawing of how the site will be laid out. ACA is not proposing any buildings, any permanent dwellings or any permanent commercial buildings as a part of this. So Mark, my question is, the site plan that required to submit to me is a lowercase site plan, which simply is a drawing about how they would use their their property versus an actual legit site plan review.
Well, I think it's a good question. And six point five point one B has exemptions. Mark gave me to jump in there to when a site planner view actually occurs. And an exemption, six point one point five, six point five point one B, one A says a change in use that does not involve or require other developments. So I, 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 I had to, I'm wondering if this is the kind of site plan as Joseph just said, that may not actually need a review and it's just part of the special use permit review process as, as a site plan that doesn't, that's exempt from the review requirements. Sorry, you guys are getting to see inside the sausage making here because it's a little, it is, it is complicated to read through your code and get, just figure it out quickly. But Mark, I, what do you think about that?
Yeah, I, I, I don't have a good answer for you right now because their application, as Joseph said, doesn't necessarily involve any new buildings as of their applications in middle right now, but the, the intent of the application is to have a pit up and running if they get approval so that they can then begin to close their current pit when it runs out of material.
So, I mean, here's the, here's the short answer. And I guess if the board could indulge us, we could, we could look at this more carefully probably offline, but I think the short answer is going to be that this site plan that's associated with this special use permit being applied for is really exempt from the formal site plan review provisions in the code and therefore they wouldn't even apply. There wouldn't be a call up. They're going to be reviewed as part of the use by special review. That's, I think, that's my answer now that I've thought through the type of site plan we're seeing. And I guess if we have a different opinion after looking at this offline, not wasting too much time tonight, we can let the board know and it can always still be subject to the call up process.
Can I, Jeff, can I make a proposal to that? Because I think the town administrator has that ability as well.
Right, that's right.
So if the board would like to give me direction, if there is a legal way or that we find that there is a way to bring it up to the board, do you want to direct me to do that now? So that we could go ahead and proceed forward if that is actually an option through the code? Does that make sense?
That makes sense.
Okay.
I would like that, yeah.
Yeah, and i- if I may, I'm sorry, this is kind of come up in this manner, but we, we, we wrote this code and it took three and a half years and we thought, we thought of every single provision, but invariably, any type of development seems to find the gray areas of our code. So my apologies that this has risen to that gray area and that I don't have a definitive answer for you based upon our code. And so we'll work with legal staff to fill in the gray area.
Mark, in terms of operating, they must have rules that they can't like do dynamiting in the middle of the night and that kind of thing. Right, or?
So they will be subject to the town's requirements and they will be also subject to the state of Colorado's requirements as it relates to mining of gravel.
So, so yes, they, they they'll, they'll, they'll have to abide by noise ordinances. So there's, it's definitely not a free license to go at it. They still have many, many, many rules to follow.
Okay.
Just as they currently do in their current pit. And for my part, forgive me for using the call up language when it's not quite that clear. I felt this was of significance to the town that, that, that's why I brought it up. So forgive the call up language that I use.
Yeah, yeah. And I, I just would say that the, not only is it subject to the town's requirements for any other development in the town, but it is also subject to the state's requirements. And so we'll probably be finding out about the state's requirements for those things as part of our review. Because they will get referrals.
Thank you. So, uh, did we finish up with the shipping container hotel or? That's something that we can.
And, and just to reiterate there, that, that is right now a minor subdivision application. It's not at the site plan. It's not at the site plan application quite yet.
Okay, so it's not.
You, you could not call it up at the moment. Once they do actually submit a site plan, that would be the time at which you could, my understanding, call it up.
Now, we're exactly a three twenty-six east arc.
The, the block between Colorado and railroad?
Is there the Legion, it's like across the street?
Yeah, it's, it's just, it's just.
Across the street from the Legion? East, you know, like we're going east, like across the street on the left. I looked it up too because I. Back over there, is that over there where? Like a tiny house. Okay, okay. Yeah, it's like.
Best of the old motel.
Oh, motel, sorry, he said bowling, like there was a bowling alley?
Oh, boulder.
Boulders, got it, got it, got it. I got all confused.
It's on the north side of Harkins.
They're going to run into the same problem that boulders, the boulders that boulders we're going to run into.
The trustee staff interaction.
Anything? I just put caramel in my mouth.
Sorry. Save Cindy. Would you like to add anything to trustee staff interaction?
No.
All right, Gina.
I'm just, I, yeah, sure. Just had a bunch of conversations. So I live over in the farm, so high density area. I also talk to other people around town proper, main street. But the, the things I keep hearing about obviously are questions about long-term housing. And randomly, generally with the farm part two, people are, are there any specific? What's the right word? Affordable housing within that, I feel like I should know that because I lived there, but I have no idea. So I'll pick your brain at some point if possible.
They are building a bunch of apartments next to.
I know the parks, but I thought those were for.
Something in there?
Is that? I was out of the factory first.
Yes, so, so all of those things are true. So yes, part of the phase two, they have seventy-seven apartment units going in.
For the workers, though, of the factory or is it open to?
That's private. That is not, town does, town worked with them in terms of zoning and things like that. But it is not, town does not have control over deed restrictions or requirements into that. Chaffey Housing Trust, which is a local group that helps with down payment assistance. They continue to work in the farms. I think they'll be active in phase two as well.
Gotcha. Okay, let's.
To be, to be clear, phase two hasn't been approved quite yet by town. It's still under review. We're in sort of the referral comment back and forth period. No, 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 phase two has been approved for the farm, right?
For the farm, it was approved.
Yeah. Okay, yeah.
So that'd be weird.
But they're installing all the infrastructure, all of that's going on right now.
Right.
Yeah, to be clear, the, yeah, if I may, to be clear, phase two has got its approval, but the apartments are still in a review for their site plan as.
Okay, that's, that's what I was thinking, my apologies. Yeah, thank you, Mark.
Cool. Good to know. So I can share some things with the people I speak with. And then the other thing is just, you know, I accepted the invite to go over to the meadows. I'd never been there yet. And so to kind of see the facility in the area, I know in the past, things have come up about that area and situation. So it was a good learning experience for me to check it out. So, but that is about it.
Good, thanks.
Yeah.
Good to have you onboard.
Oh, thanks.
Joel.
Yeah, thank you. I have two items. One, there's a letter in the back of the packet from the Upper Ark Watershed Partnership. What else? On behalf of them, on behalf of town, I guess, but they asked for a letter of support from the town to, to carry on some studies in a number of different basins. Cotton Creek is one of them. And, and so it's simply a letter saying, hey, we support this grant application so they can get some funds to carry this out. This could feed into some further analysis and further planning efforts up on Cotton Creek. So it's just a request for a letter of support. And I don't know if Duff will be available to sign tomorrow. But if the board would approve or direct either the Duff, if he's available or Mayor Pro Tem to sign it, that'd be great because the deadline is, we should get him the letter tomorrow.
I'll, I think it's a good idea.
Yeah, great. Do we need a motion?
Yes.
Okay, somebody want to make that motion?
A motion that we write a letter of support and either Mayor Pro Tem, Libby Bay signs it if Dust not available or Dust signs it if he is available so we can get her done.
Second, great. So Nyberg and McCready. Roll call. Mayor Pro Tim Fay, yes, Lucy McCready.
Yes.
Lucy Rowe.
Yep.
Lucy Nyberg.
Yes.
Lucy Swisher.
Yes.
Trustee Volpe.
Yes.
Thank you. And the second one, just a reminder, on October 12th, we're going to be visiting the water master plan again. And so if you guys have any input or questions about any details, I'd love to be able to compile some of that. So for any kind of presentation, follow up things for October 12th. So if you could get them to me by like Friday or over the weekend or something, I can work on compiling them. If you don't have time and you need till October 12th to really, you know, get into it and you bring questions on October 12th, that's fine too. So, but just a reminder, if you visit. Thank you.
My thing I have really is, I just thought it was very nice that we could all get together and have dinner again at the Baby Strong Dinner. That was just really refreshing to sort of open our community up a little bit. Devin?
Yeah, since I was absent at last meeting, I wanted to thank town staff and Sean and the water department for showing us around. That was really awesome. I feel like I want to go back every month and learn more. But that was great. And then I, it was great to have trustee McCready and Mayor Pro Tem Fay at the tour of the meadows. Ben Eichel was also there from the rec department. It was a really interesting tour to be on this side of it. I also attended it personally. So it was cool to see that side and the other side. And it was a great event and it was a very professionally done. And as we saw in our tour, they, they knew what they were doing and they were really good at it. So, you know, it was, it's really interesting to be at that kind of event knowing this side of everything. And to see people come to our town and be very excited and very in love with our area. So it was a great event and I hope something like that happens again.
Nice.
So, yeah.
Thank you.
The only thing I want to mention is that most likely tomorrow, if not Thursday, will be sort of the formal launch of a public input campaign that I mentioned briefly at my, at the last meeting. This public input campaign will launch digitally. So you'll see links to our YouTube channel for an eight-minute video that gives a very high level overview of town on parcels of land, broadly what some of them are used for, and then focusing in on some that you have already given direction for their planning or use in the near to long-term future. There are four questions that we ask at the end of that video for folks to supply their input and feedback on. And then that will culminate in a public meeting on October 11th, which is a Monday right before your next meeting. That meeting will be here at 5:00 PM. So folks can either send their feedback electronically, directly to me or show up at that meeting. I'll be providing a very informal overview of what we heard on the 12th. And then just a reminder that on the 26th of October, be coming back with a much more dedicated report and recommendations as it relates to the Carbonette Street parcels. I just want to make sure you all aware of that public input campaign launching. Feel free to reach out to me if you want more context on that. If you hear any questions.
So are you sending us a link to it or how, how are you publicizing it?
It will be going out. I can make sure to send you all the direct links to YouTube. It should be on social media as well. So it's really designed to try to be a broad reaching campaign for those that might not normally come to an in-person meeting.
Jack?
Nothing for me.
Okay, and Sean, you're back there?
Sure, Baby Strong, yeah, kind of follow up on that. I, I agree, would have, would have kind of missed it. It's great to see everybody. And like, a lot of people donate a lot of time into it on our end. I'd like to recognize waste management and shitty ways to, they're accepting for all their donations and getting. Shit, those guys, guys.
Paula. I don't have anything, but thank you for passing the short-term ordinance. Yeah, it was hard work by everybody in this room and everybody on virtually and stuff. So what a team effort by even the public staff, the board of trustees. And like you all said, may not be perfect, but it's a step in the right direction, right? Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, thanks to everybody for working on that so hard.
I don't have caramel in my mouth anymore.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Lucy Swisher.
I agree with Paula. I am so thankful that we could move forward on that. And if adjustments be, need to be made, they can be made, but it was so important to start.
Yes.
And I do realize you guys have hours and hours and hours in it. And yeah.
It's a good group that worked on this one.
And trustee Volpe, you got anything you want to add?
No, other than to say thanks for, thanks for all your work tonight. You guys did a good job. Sorry I'm not there.
Where are you?
Biggs representing Stanger de Cristo at a regional national rural cooperative association.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for hanging in there with us. Okay, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Row and Swisher. Sitting as adjourned.
Hi, everybody. Have a good night.